All right, I'd like to call the April 13, 2021, regular village council.
Bob, be at your phone.
Meeting to order. I show the time is right at 6:30. I show we have a full quorum. I'd like to first need a motion to allow council member Mark Elise to participate remotely.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes?
We need to postpone the presentation. Mary Seif is not able to be here.
Okay, what is that? Number is that?
The. I have no other changes.
And then when we get to new business or open topics, will you announce it now?
No, you can just talk about.
Let's just something small. Any other changes, Bob?
No, sir.
Thank you. So I'll need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have a pleasurable allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're a little behind there.
Bob Maruski.
It felt like an echo.
Yeah, echo.
It's getting an echo, 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 echo. Thank you. First up, public comment period. I don't show.
We have any public?
We have no public right now. Anybody? You got a few people on Zoom call.
That's Charles. He's with your financial advisor.
Okay, and Andy is?
Andy is with your law firm, Partico.
Okay.
They're all for your stomach finance.
All right, so not seeing anybody on the list. I don't think we have any, right? So we'll move on to, I guess, the new B, which is reports and updates. First up is managers' report, village. Well, I'll let you go through it, Christina.
So I have a lot. I'll try to be brief here. So basically sidewalks, we've had a lot of sidewalk complaints here the last couple of months. And what we've noticed is that there are several sidewalks within the village that do not live under a maintenance agreement, and therefore they're responsibility of the village to maintain for safety and liability reasons. So what I've done is asked AMT to give us an assessment cost for sidewalks. Just letting y'all know that this is going to come down the line, another contingency expense that we will have to start planning for because we currently do not plan for sidewalk maintenance. We've operated under the premise that we would pass that along to the HRAs that those sidewalks live in, and we do do that to the ones that we have maintenance agreements with. But we are learning that there are a lot that have fallen through the cracks that do not have maintenance agreements, that were either taken in by DOT without the maintenance agreement or taken in directly from the developer before we had maintenance agreements, like Firethorn, for instance. So that is an area that just wanted to keep y'all abreast that we're going to have to start planning for. Any questions? Accounting firm, as you know, our finance officer is going out on maternity leave in a couple of months, and so we are planning for an accounting firm to kind of help us through this process for probably the next year, perhaps even two years, depending on how staff feels about doing the post audit stuff. And we are going to submit an RFP probably this week. We'll have it out for about a month, and we'll bring that back to all for appropriation at some point. Any questions? Solid waste, the RFP was sent out a couple of weeks ago. I think I sent you on email about it. So all communications with any vendors must now cease. If anybody contacts you, you can let them know to contact us for questions. The RFPs are due back on May 7, so we'll have some general answers by then on cost. And Weddington, and I will sit down and go over costs and crutchy areas for that. And we will present at a joint meeting on the 17th or the 24th of May. So I'll get with you guys on those two dates to see which one works better, and then we will present to you Village Marvin on June 8. Any questions on that? Okay.
Real quick, have we heard anything from any of the providers on that?
We've heard a lot from them, but we have not heard anything since the RFP is on out.
Okay.
So usually what will happen when the RFP goes out, they'll submit forms. They're called requests for information, and they'll put all of their questions, concerns on that form. We turn around and we send it back to them in like an addendum format so that everyone knows about it, but we haven't received any of those. We've received just kind of confirmation that they've got our emails, but we have sent it out to all the vendors that we know.
And we get fucked with now.
Yeah, it's the only communication we can have is through those RFIs.
And the bids will all be opened at one time together, and they generally wait till pretty close to the last period of bid because they want to make sure there's new clarifications on some of the questions that could modify how they would respond. So we won't know anything until the bids are open.
Do we have a deadline, what timeframe on the bid opening?
May 7.
Okay. It's coming up quick.
Okay, American Rescue Plan update. I was hoping to have an update by the time we had this meeting, and unfortunately I don't. We're still waiting on information back from the treasurer's office. I do have a printout from the League of Municipalities, or I'm sorry, the school of government that updates some of the things, but it's nothing more than what I've already told you guys already. So I will put this on the next meeting, and hopefully we'll have an update then.
We'll hope so.
Legislative updates. So at the last council meeting, you all had unanimously approved to support a defense local bill request from Representative Willis. I have sent that information over to him, and he has rallied up some discussions and some support for that local bill, and we are actually going on a field trip on next Tuesday to discuss this information further with him and/or any other legislators that are there that day.
And who is going?
Myself, mayor, council member Mark Elise, and council member Line.
Okay, so that is now a meeting?
Yes, we're opening up.
Well, it's only a meeting in Raleigh when we're meeting with them.
I know, but I'm just saying it's still, we still have quorum.
Right, but we'd have to obviously.
I have a draft. It's a quorum notice already drafted.
And we have to do it the next day for take a K.
So given that's a quorum and that's a meeting, maybe a question for you, is it when we're meeting with the legislators, is that a public?
Yeah, it's public.
Somebody can come, and yes, if you have a quorum there, they could, but they would have to know where and when. You just can't make it unreasonable for them to have access, but you don't have to meet here.
Well, it'll be in Raleigh.
And you've got to meet for a forum, but you don't have enough to, I don't think you're going to have enough. Somebody here going?
We don't have enough to take action.
You don't have enough to take action. You just have enough to.
Talk.
Talk and let the public know that you're doing it.
Okay.
That should be because I don't vote.
Correct.
Do we have a time?
We do. We're going to, we need to be there by 11:00. So we need to think about leaving by 7:30, 8ish depending on traffic.
So Jamie and I talked briefly. We would probably carpool. Bob, you're going to drive
Hold on. Yes, I'm going to drive with Claudia. She's coming.
Okay.
Jade, do you mind if I carpool with y'all?
Not at all. And then we can pick you up along the way, maybe meet you somewhere along 85.
And we can work out the details closer to date.
Which is next week?
Thumb out.
Next week.
Yeah.
What's that?
She's going to stick her thumb out. With her little down sack.
All right, moving on to all-inclusive contract. I actually had this on here because we were having some issues with our all-inclusive. The all-inclusive, if you don't remember, it's a miscellaneous concrete repair contract that we approved in January, and we've been waiting on the vendor to come by and sign it, which basically means we have had no one to do.
Is that who rolled up in here this after this morning?
Emergency repairs. So I've actually got it signed now, and we've got some people gone out and actually got some repairs done.
Hey, Bob, can you eat your phone?
We've had a lot of repairs over the last couple of weeks, a lot, and I'll get to that in the roads report, but it's signed done. There's no need to really give you an update now.
Do they send, when they do the repairs, do they send you any kind of pictures or confirmation?
No, but they do AMT, and he goes out and checks it.
I'm just thinking of things that the public should know that, you know, hey, just want to let you know that repairs were made on X sidewalk of this. It just shows and tells, lets the public know that we are doing something.
So.
And I don't want to inundate them with 50 pictures, but a one picture, you know, a week or something.
So all of the public or just the ones that had fixed, like the?
No, all of the public.
Okay.
Because. It shows where our money is going.
Yeah, it shows that our money's going, and it's an update. I mean, just a simple picture that says this was, and it doesn't have to be before and after, just, you know, this is what was fixed, and then it goes out.
So we'll add that on the communication piece when we get to that, and then we'll make sure we get some whatever is going on that month.
So who's going out to get it?
AMT.
That's good.
Which is?
Mike.
Which is the person that approved or checked off on Firethorn streets that were done correctly or incorrectly.
That they're still not done.
Yes, I know. I talked to him about it today.
But that's who we're relying on. I mean, I'm sorry, like, I'll say in a public meeting, like, that gives me zero confidence. I don't, I don't.
Is it AMT?
Yeah. And then they screwed up Firethorn roads. I mean, the pothole or the manhole covers were like this. That one corner is still not fixed.
You hit them every day, I guarantee you, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I do too.
But I mean, that, I have little confidence in that.
I think there, I'm going to say something that's probably just bad, but I somehow sometimes seem to think that they're on the level of the DOT. There's just, there's just.
I agree with that.
Or DOT employees, I think, some of them are.
Well, yeah, but I just get that, I just get that feeling, and that should not be a feeling that we get. We should, they should.
No, it's our engineer. We're paying them a lot of money every year. And I mean, they signed off on Firethorn, and they're like, oh, well, here's how much you need to spend to do it. No, you signed off on it.
They should have some sort of.
And they are, they are, but they still haven't done it yet.
Right. And I'm not, you know, Mike may be the messenger. He may be the person that's actually digging the shovel. I don't know, but it just appears to me that they're just like, they just don't give a shit.
I do know that Mike, the Firethorn manhole covers, they are having to pay for that. I do remember that conversation.
And that quarter that still holds water.
Right.
I know that he was waiting until the all-inclusive contract was let to try to negotiate on their end so they could, he could get our cost so that he could save on most.
That is, that is not our problem. That, I cannot believe that that's the reason that that hasn't been done.
I'm not even looking at, I'm not looking at it even from a Firethorn standpoint.
No, I'm not either, but that's still ridiculous.
I'm just looking at it from a 30,000-foot view. I just, I just think they, they have the same commitment that the DOT does, and I'm sorry.
Once we get some staffing issues addressed and settled down, maybe we can look at hiring a different engineer. I just, there's not, our hands are tied right now with what we do with them, unfortunately. I can't go out and expect it. I don't have the engineering skills to do so, and we don't have anyone else in the house.
No, that's fair enough. But it's on them because they're our client. We're their client.
Yeah, we pay them a lot of money.
Right, so it should be that they're going, yes, yes, ma'am, what else can we do?
I sent them a very nice email this morning.
Okay.
About a lot of things, so not really nice.
Just a heads up, I was in CRTPO yesterday, Tuesday, whatever day, and.
Today is Tuesday, but that's okay.
Today is Tuesday. It was a Monday meeting, yes, Monday in the morning. And they were talking about road things, and one of the things I brought up, and this has just irked me forever. So I don't know how many calls we get on the corner. I'll give this, I brought this up as a specific example. I said, is there any better technology these days or whatever, because it appears that when it's a DOT road improvement, that they do the minimum amount. They'll come by, in fact, now they don't even get out of the vehicle. They come by, splash, whatever. My point was on that corner when we have the little lake that forms after a short amount of time, but keep calling them. I said, are you doing that intentionally, not spending the money because you know there's going to be a roundabout? And the problem is, the roundabout has gone on for how many years? So why, I mean, and it's still maybe a couple of years before it gets finished. We don't know if there's going to be another hurricane or not. My point to them being is, when you fix it, is there any incentive to them to fix it to where it's going to last for longer? Because I would imagine that we would continue to get calls on the corner. I know there's another hole.
But did they give you the reason? Because I know the reason.
What was the reason? What's the reason?
You tell me.
Well, they, they said when they know that's on the agenda to be fixed, they would look at that and say, okay, we're not going to expend as much time and effort and resources to fix it, knowing that there's going to be a roundabout in there.
All right, so what I was told was that.
That's what they told me.
They do not want to fix it because they do not want a right turn lane there, because then it will block people trying to turn left, their line of sight, with people pulling out, trying to turn right. And they are, they are trying to, they are intentionally leaving that there so that two cars, one car is not trying to go left at the same time somebody's trying to go right. That's what I was.
I may have not had the right DOT representative in the meeting, but I just brought that up as an example of the technology that they use. When they come by, they'll splash whatever, the stone down, the gravel goes everywhere, and it doesn't really fix.
They don't, they don't want people to, they don't want people to use that.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we build it a little bit higher and create a curve, and then it fixes both problems?
Because they're going to spend in the roundabout. They don't want to spend money.
It's just asphalt.
And time and manpower, and then they got to look at it, and it's, you know.
It just, it makes all of us, unfortunately, it makes all of us look bad because it sits there.
Yeah, it's ugly.
They think of us.
Yeah.
And they think of DOT.
They think it's ours because it's in Marvin.
Right.
And we have to pay for most of it, so, even though we don't own it.
Yeah, the last two items, disc golf and signage replacement, I'm going to table those. Those are actually Derek topics that I needed to discuss with him before the meeting, and I haven't had time to do that, so.
Okay.
But the sign guy should be coming out in the next couple of weeks and getting these replaced.
Oh, awesome. So then we can start our auction. Can I be the auctioneer?
For what? Just so I, just so I don't forget it on the communication, but that should be another picture that goes and reminds everybody.
The new signs.
The new signs are going out.
Got it.
I got Firethorn Club driving.
That's all I have.
We'll see.
Yeah.
You have it all ready?
I have, I have mine from years ago.
When we change. Matter of fact, I still have, I've got a burwick and some other ones too. I need to give those to somebody.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Wait, hold on, wait, I got a question. No, it's going to be for Rohit, and he's not here. Hold on, but I'll ask Christina, the grant, did we ever find out what the bare minimum is?
They are, no, and we did send them an email, and they're going to, they're planning a training class right now, so.
And I would like to put that on our action item, ongoing action item. What is it? It's the.
The STIP grant.
What about it? What am I putting on there?
The bare minimum requirements.
Who am I signing that to?
Rohit.
Bare minimum requirements?
Okay, so next up, going into planners' report, or are you going to take that, Christina?
No, Austin is.
I get to be Rohit today.
I'm not Christina, but I'll answer that. Because I can answer.
So Rohit just asked me, just asked me to read this aloud in the meeting.
You really don't need to, like, really, like.
Is it that thick?
No, oh, yeah, that's the whole.
It's the one page that is this. It's the one page that's in our report. Did everybody read it?
Head on desk.
Yeah, bam.
This is what he was going to read?
Yeah, I don't think you need to read it.
On lighting ordinance?
MHD.
Any questions from that, Bob? Did you get that?
I have questions, but nobody can answer them.
I did. I'm okay.
I just want to know when the lights are going to be installed. I keep hearing, I know that's the lighting ordinance, but I keep hearing, oh, we're waiting on whatever. Like, I mean, it has been almost two years.
There was an email last week about it.
He's saying to consider putting this task on hold.
That's the ordinance. That's the ordinance. I'm asking about the actual physical lights.
We need to do another survey.
I don't remember the exact email, but they're still waiting.
He's kidding.
They're still waiting on approval.
I'll be retired by the time they approve the lights.
I'll try to see if I can find it.
But I mean, it's, I mean, it's, like, I mean, I'm sorry, but I mean.
Austin might be retired.
We're going to put the lights up. We're going to put the lights up. It went in two weeks. Somebody's going to hit them.
That's the night the lights went out in Marvin.
Oh, and by the way, the lights over here at this church shine all over the road.
This church?
Yeah.
Matt said he had gotten some more information after talking with his supervisor. He plans on adding what they had mentioned, and it should be fairly quick. This was on the 24th of March.
So like a month ago. It's been like three weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to follow up again.
That's fairly quick in their eyes, I guess.
All right, okay. The, so we're done there. On to number three, Rose's report.
Okay, basically, I just told you on the admin report, but we have had a ton of issues the last couple of weeks, I guess all due to the rain. We've had sinkholes and catchbasins kind of collapsing into the back, so we've got out and done some emergency repairs on that, but.
On Marvin owned roads?
Waste and chase.
Most of them are all letting it chase, and there were some that were pretty bad. I went out and looked myself.
Good job, Joe.
I did not vote then.
You did not vote now. You did not vote then.
Just for the record.
So just letting y'all know, y'all will probably see some increased expenditures from that department.
Where are we pulling that from?
Contingency.
It's not going to Cowbell now. Contingency is the new deal.
I like you with the cuss from Cowbell. We'll just take that in Cowbell.
Okay, sorry.
That's it. That's all. Just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have deputies' report.
Hey, Tommy.
How are you doing? Last month, we had a total of 10 accidents. Seven of them were property damaged with a primer, one which was an EMD, which is a little more serious. We had a total of 14 alarms. We had one burglary to a vehicle, which was the 1800 block of Farrell Farms Road.
Oh, in the gated community.
It is.
Wow.
It was, I took that report, and it was basically a smash and grab. They went in, busted the window, and they took a handicap placard from the vehicle.
Shut the front doors.
So.
And in a gated neighborhood, so.
It's interesting that the person would, he kept things missing. That, that, it's very valuable, I will say, because my dad uses it, and it gets me right to the front. I don't use it on my own, but I'm with them.
Nice, Jen.
Nice recovery.
We had a total of 378 preventative patrols and traffic stops. We had 74 traffic stops.
What's a preventative patrol, Tommy?
Preventative patrols are when we go out into a neighborhood, we'll just check out, like, say Firethorn, we'll go in there and hit that. It just documents where we've been, how much time we've spent there, getting out, talking to people.
Cool.
It's just basically getting out and being seen.
Good, okay.
For the record, should be 75 traffic stops is what I got away with.
I mean, seriously.
You might have got to take it pull in the first one. Quick and then you're shaming. I'm liking those numbers on the traffic stops.
Me too.
They'll start to go up. It's just the weather's getting warmer. People are getting out. They're stirring a little bit more, and more and more foot traffic, so we're going to be out running and watching.
Was it you sitting up here last night at the church?
No.
No.
It must have been.
I don't know who it was.
Had to have been Mason.
I don't know. Okay, well, I waved. Everyone went by.
I see you got an Explorer back, I guess.
Thank God. I'm so glad to have that thing back. I was in a Caprice riding on a corn cobbler. It handles good, but it doesn't, I'm riding 12-hour shifts.
All right, very good.
Any questions you think I can answer for anybody?
Be safe.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Go get them. Thanks, Tommy.
Oh, wait, Bob has a question, Tommy.
Yes.
Tommy, I have a quick question from a constituent. Sunday, a week ago, there were, something had happened to a motorcyclist at, of course, the infamous Newtown Road and Marvin Road.
Yes. The gentleman looked up, took his eyes off the road, and motorcycle went off into the ditch, and that was it. He had less, he had less than $1,000 damage and didn't want the highway patrol to come out. Thank goodness he wasn't drinking, so he was, that's on him then.
On behalf of all of us, Tommy, and for what's happening in the national news, thank you for what you do.
Well, thank you, guys. We've had tremendous support from the community, and it's, you know, thank you.
No, we appreciate you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Good night.
All right, moving on, we have, next up, planning board chair report.
John is not here.
Not here today, so we don't have any updates?
Bob, you got anything for us for planning board?
Yeah, I mean, the basic, the basic takeaway from that planning board meeting, which you all are somewhat familiar with, like, maybe to the public that's listening, there was a concern and conversation about density and exactly what is it that we are going to look at as far as density and regarding the Marvin Heritage District. So it was, it was, that was maybe a lot of the conversation of what do we define? Were we going to go from here? In other words, is it, whatever are we going to look at density to support the Marvin Heritage District, and to what extent? And that was really the big takeaway from the whole meeting, so that's what I can summarize.
Yeah, I think at some point, there were some numbers that were thrown around that were inadvertent because we never really even approved that, so I think that got some people concerned for the record, but I think we're basically starting this off where, you know, we're going to be looking to planning board to get their suggestions, recommendations, as well as the heritage committee that's formed, and then we can decide what this. And I'm just going to say this, in this situation, because we're creating something from nothing, if you will, just raw land in some cases, but there could be, in this scenario, winners and losers, and meaning, and I'm not saying total losers, and maybe some areas may be just areas that are 40 and nothing more, and they don't really get to be a commercial. I, we don't know that yet, but we kind of have the area outlined and stuff. I just think that we just can't get too far ahead, and I don't want to spend any more money from the village standpoint, so we'll just have to walk this carefully and figure out.
Yeah, I think we let planning board and the Heritage District Committee kind of work through some of those numbers.
Yeah, what do you think is going to look right, or what could look right, or what's a good balance and stuff? And I don't know if I'm in favor of putting all commercial on one side, and what could have gone there housing-wise is all pushed down to the other side. I don't know if I'm in favor of that. In fact, I can almost tell you for sure I'm not in favor of that, but, you know.
Hopefully they come back with.
We'll see what, you know, it's up to, I think, these homeowners, landowners, to figure out, okay, what's going to be best? Will that fit into this, and does it fit into our overall picture, whatever that is. All right. Moving on, the PRNG chair report.
Oh, John's here.
John gets raped into it today.
I didn't have anything prepared, but I know one thing that we had a good discussion about today that I can give you an update on is starting planning for the Marvin celebration in next year, and we had a couple of good ideas, and Jamie and I, we've talked about getting involved in that, so we've increased a couple of, we're going to add a couple of meetings that are more going to be work sessions that we can dedicate specifically to that, and I think if we start doing that every other month now, in addition to a little time at each regular meeting to give updates, you know, we'll get, over the next couple of months, a framework in place that we can really put into action for the next year, so. Um, but that and most of the other stuff is, is pretty normal stuff that we've been doing lately. Um, but that's a, that's an exciting piece that we're going to start really moving forward. Also, Marvin, uh, Marvin Gardens and getting that pocket park, a couple items on that that we, um, that, that we discussed, some plantings that Publix is looking to change there and uh, some changes in, in some of those things. And certainly, I think tonight, you guys actually vote on accepting the um, pocket garden there, so. So, once, once you're able to do that, we'll be able to start to put some more focus and, and get in that thing, kind of. Final, finally, uh, uh, some things need to be figured and stuff like that and really get it developed to where we want it.
And funding-wise for those projects, are?
Well, I, I think we discussed that and, and I think it was even Kimberly that said, how quickly can we get started? I, I don't know that there's any money in this year's budgets to really move forward with that. I think it was part of the conversation, so we might have to wait until July.
Yeah, it's at dinner, so.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
But, but we at least have some of the planning, we've got a rough draft and some sketches that we did that you might have seen.
Yeah, that we approved.
Yeah, so.
We approved it.
We, we should be ready to go.
Okay.
If you, if y'all do any of those extra meetings, just for the Marvin Day thing and all that, please let me know.
Okay.
I love you.
I already volunteered you for that.
Good.
I did. I said, oh, Jamie wants to totally, and he wants to be in on those. And I know you do, I mean, I was being curious, I know.
In fact, I'm going to put you up in the front of the parade. The marching guy.
Yes!
With the big stick, whatever they call that. Yeah, I already assigned you for that, so. Okay, thank you, John. Next up, uh, we have consent agenda. I'll need a motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have public hearing. Um, first, number one is open the public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the village charter to change the number of council members from five to six. I'll need a motion to, uh, open the public hearing.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Um, public comments, did we have anyone to sign up?
No one has signed up unless someone wants to speak here.
No one wants to speak?
I think they're with the final.
All right, that, that said, no one here to sign, um, comment, I'll need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, should we bring this, open this to discussion, is that correct?
Yes, you can have some discussion. It really is the public hearing, you let the public comment on the proposal to give them an opportunity, and it's also with the advertisement to put it out there. Uh, legally, you cannot vote on the ordinance until the next regular meeting. I mean, you can't even call a special meeting, it's all.
It's in the regular meeting, so the other instance will happen is in May.
Yeah, and that's really when you should, you can, I mean, I'm talking, discuss it sometimes, but you can't take any action. This was just to allow, really, a public hearing to allow people to comment and ask questions and you didn't have it. And I think the ordinance is, uh, pretty straightforward, made a few changes to it just to shorten the, the ordinance and to clarify when the seat would take place.
That's going to be my na- that was.
And y'all can change that, but right now, it's to make sure, to just clarify that you have staggered terms.
Mm-hmm.
And, and last time, there was a question to be, but when do we do this? And it's like, well, the interpretation from the school of government and others is you can't appoint, so it'd be at the next election, so we just put that in the, in the language so it's clear and evident, but it will still be valid and effective upon your, your vote.
So, what, and that, this is sort of relevant to this, with the proposed, um, uh, yes, change that they're going to make on the state level.
That was going to be my question.
To move this year's election, that's in November, because we're on off years, to two thousand twenty-two, how does that, if at all, affect this, if that passes?
Okay.
Because then, what it means is everybody gets an extension of one year.
And then they would probably push that to, they may bump them along.
They're going to push everything.
Have to push.
The question is, are they going to come back to schedule with odd years?
I doubt it. Because they're, because, because in the, their reasoning is to, it's less confusing to voters. So they're, then they're not going to come back to it and like.
And more participation, quite frankly, too.
Well, yeah, I'll, um, thank you, I'll, I'll clarify that language a little bit better. I think it was intent.
And, and it has twenty-one, December twenty-one in there, and then it says November twenty-three, so we definitely need to.
Well, no, it's after, that's when it's effective. So it's effective.
Really should be effective when you ask.
I mean, we can do it effectively when you're through it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like, I don't like having, because it seems like then they should be in office then. We can, we can change that.
We'll clarify that.
And then we need to, like, make it, I guess, ambiguous to when, like, that election would be held.
I, I think we can put language that we will have it at the election fo- I can use more eloquent terms, but not this election, but the following.
Yeah.
So that they're staggered terms, because I think that's your intent.
That's what we want, it is.
Because you don't want to have, bring four people, and then that will continue.
No, no, I want three and three and the mayor.
You just want it, you want to, it will be the, the next following election, make sure it's staggered.
Yes.
So right now, mayor runs with two council each time. So what I think the goal would be to is mayor still has a two-year term.
Correct.
Council has four-year terms.
Correct.
But mayor, instead of running with two councilmen, is running with three councilmen.
Three and three.
Three and three, yes.
I got it, thank you.
Okay. And then, so, well, so we'll see that change at the, when we vote on it.
You, you will, and I can make any other changes then and tweak it when you vote. But yeah, you don't vote on the ordinance until, until the next meeting, that's the first time you can act on it.
So just to be clear, they're, they're going to just, they're moving it out one year and then keeping it at that schedule? They're not going back to the?
Uh, we don't know what they're doing yet, but that is the proposed, is to.
Be a good question, or in front of them, too.
Yeah, is to move it to twenty-two and then keep it, because, think about it, then Board of Elections isn't doing elections every year. They're, you know, it's, it's, it's.
It's, it's much more cost-effective for the counties, county's.
My understanding, the only reason why they moved it to begin with is because they didn't have census data back in time.
Well, that's part of it. That's one of the reasons that they're, that they're wanting to move it, because they don't have the census data back. But the other, the other reasonings are, it's more, it's less confusing. Where is that? Where, where is that thing at? Do you have that email?
Because a lot of the elections are based on precincts. Instead of, um, as a whole, like, like y'all have, and then you've got to have all the numbers and the realignment based upon the size of each precinct. And the people with precincts, they can't, they don't know what to do.
Hang on, I'm going to find that. Is it, when I just sent you?
Well, I remember it a little scary.
All right, here, here, here are the reasonings. Uh, address redistricting, reduce voter confusion, and reduce municipal expenses. And it would be to move the twenty-two elections to May three primary, July twelve second primary, and November eight general election.
So that's got to come up soon.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question to ask when you guys are up there. Yeah, so Chaplain, if you can.
Got it, yeah, that's, that's good instruction, and it's easier to do that. In front of a computer than on the fly, the next meeting.
Okay.
And we can still revise it.
Okay.
Just got to get it closer.
Yeah, and can we get rid of a lot of this red? Like, it really confused.
Those are tractions.
I know what they are, but I'm like, what am I supposed to be reading?
We'll, we'll get you a clean version.
Yeah, that'd be good.
And that's it next time.
We just wanted to let you know what was revised by now.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, um, next up, we have, uh, in public hearings. Open the public hearings for conditional use permit application number two-one dash one-two-six-oh-eight. Address is three-three-one-five Sandalwood Drive, pool in the rear yard that abuts the side yard. You're going to handle this?
I am, yes, I am.
You need to.
There's a motion.
Chris Tanikin's swearing in, can't you guess, the deputy clerk.
You need, anybody that's going to speak, applicant needs to be sworn in.
Well, let me help you.
Hold on, wait.
Hold on, let me open the public hearings. Is there a motion to open that public hearing? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, is anyone?
We're going to swear in Austin.
I know, but anyone else here, public com- other than John? Public comments first?
At least, uh, sworn in. Because, hey, what, does anybody else?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give during this hearing is the truth? The whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you guide?
I do.
All right, so then, we go into public comments?
The, the public comments is really just the public hearing, it's all the same.
Okay, it's all same. So no one signed up for public comments?
I swear, he's, he asks that every public hearing, he's insane.
Well, in.
I just, no, because I've, in the past, to be fair, in the past, when we had a public comments, a, a public hearing, we have the public speak, but doesn't necessarily mean the public gets up there and swears.
Yeah, with, um, with conditional use, which this is, you're supposed to base all your decision only upon sworn-in evidence, so everything should really come at the public hearing.
But the public still has the opportunity to, to come in and comment, because I could say if I didn't like Mr. Barrisant, and I just wanted to come in and, you know, say, you know, I'm against this. I don't have to swear on a Bible to get a public comment.
Or.
You have to get sworn in?
Under the.
I'm just clarifying.
Yes.
Because that's never been done.
I know, and we could, we could probably strike public comments on those, on the agenda. That would help clarify and just set, call up the, the public hearing.
So, yeah, okay, so this just comes from history.
What can do you of what?
Of conditional use zoning versus general zoning.
Okay.
I know.
Or ordinance.
Or an ordinance.
Or an ordinance.
That's the only one.
Okay. Good to note, good to note, so.
It's not an ordinance.
And I'm not picking on you, Joe.
It's not general zoning, it's not all of those other things, it's the weird conditional use, which we seem to have a lot of with the pools.
So, Austin would get highlighted that next time for me, so I don't ask the question.
I can.
I, I can change it.
All right, um, so we'll just get, so we go to discussion, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay. John, you'll have to help me with this.
Is this your property right here? No, which one is yours?
Your own Sandalwood Drive, right?
I think you need to go with this way, yeah.
How many wide was it?
Keep going. And there, uh, right here.
Ah, okay. Okay.
And, and if I could, um, I did want to make one note, which on, uh, Row Hit's MOTU of April fifth, uh, two thousand twenty-one, on page seventy of your packet, um, I did notify him this just as he was going away, but he did note in the second paragraph under actions requested by village council, the applicant is proposing to construct an above-ground swimming pool. It's not an above-ground swimming pool, it'll be an in-ground swimming pool, but it, it's going to be on an elevated deck, so I, I have to kind of, my yard slopes, as you'll see.
Okay.
So it's an in-ground swimming pool, not above-ground.
Okay.
He, he asked me, he was on his way out for vacation when I, when I noticed that, so he said, just bring it up and, and make sure that I'm.
I'm going to have a similar situation when I do mine, John, I know what you're talking about. Okay.
This, this one's pretty simple, uh, it's well, uh, it's well within the required setbacks. Uh, John, you, but you have received, um, support from all your neighbors about, um, bypassing the requirements for extra screening due to the size of your lots and the other natural screening.
Yep, I, um, from all five, three in the rear and then the two on the sides have provided letters of support.
Were they in here?
Yeah.
And planning board approved this with no additional criteria. And John included some, included a PowerPoint showing, um, showing what he's proposing.
I don't even know how that C is cool with all those trees in the summer.
I couldn't find it on a map. Google, Google sent me to the wrong address.
And it'll be directly behind the rear of the house. It, it'll be unattached deck, so literally right there, and you'll see that reflected.
So there's a deck that goes first and then, but it is in ground, it's just the deck is up above.
Yeah, and, and what's happening, you look to the, to the high side there. Um, I'm actually doing a, a addition that's already been approved for twenty-two feet. That goes into the slope, so they'll be pulling, pulling some of the dirt around there to build it up flat and leveling the back.
The rear, you have pictures of a lot of things, I even saw some water leakage, whatever that was for.
Well, that's part of the reason, yeah, that's an unfinished basement.
Oh, okay.
That, um, I have water issues, and that's a part of the reason why I'm doing that, to help protect and kind of degrade the water around the, uh, it's a forty-year-old home, so a lot of the ground is settled back in towards the foundation.
Okay.
Do you guys have any questions? Row Hit didn't really leave anything else, other than he recommends approval?
Planning board's approved, huh?
Mm-hmm, approved with no additional criteria.
All right, if no questions, um, does someone want to, uh, is there something to read here?
Findings of fact?
Findings of facts.
All right.
Kim, you usually get this honor.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve conditional use permit number two-one dash one-two-six-oh-eight for three-three-one-five Sandalwood Drive, pool in the rear yard that abuts the side yard. Contingent, uh, no contrary comments being received by the clerk within twenty-four hours after the conclusion of the public hearing. And I would like to find, in the affirmative, these findings of fact, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety of located where proposed and developed according to plan. The use meets all required conditions and specifications. The use will not substantially injure the adjoining, the value of adjoining or abutting property, or the use is a public necessity. The location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan, as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and will be in general conformity with this chapter in the village land use plan.
Further, that was good.
That was good.
She gets that title going forward for all.
I was proud of myself!
I think, I think you deserve some candy.
No, you can't argue with that.
I think the word harmony.
Send it down here, I'll take it.
I mean, you could have a lot of things going wrong, but as long as it's in harmony.
All right, further discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations!
To the open, grand opening.
When's the pool party?
Maybe we'll work it into Marvin Day.
Yeah!
We need some parking space. We're looking for parking space right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
All right, moving on to unfinished business, uh.
Village Hall.
I'm sorry, Village Hall.
I'll, I'll make some of that appear, so Tim's not tempted.
Thank you.
Village Hall?
So basically, just wanted to update you guys, um.
Yeah.
We did get the AIA contract signed today by both us and the GC. Took a little while for us to get all that situated, and so now we're just waiting for Union County permit approval. They were submitted on three-nineteen. We're typically at a three-to-six-week window of approval, so we're getting into that end in, uh, the approval. Hopefully, we'll hear something back from them here shortly, and then we'll issue the notice to proceed right, right when we get those permit approvals, and the GC is ready to go as soon as he gets that.
So the shovel will hit the ground right away?
I can go out and help.
We don't have to do anything with the wa- water with the?
No, we said we're going to wait.
Going to wait.
Yeah.
So what's the, so that's with Village Hall, but what about the, the sewer line? What's the?
We've got a permit for that, too, right?
We, um, what, we, Union County has to approve the tap-in, and then we're still waiting on Union County. We're also still waiting on the contract to be signed by them, so.
So they could get started before the sewer line?
Well, hopefully, it'll be.
In conjunction, yeah.
And, and when is our, um, little, uh, tour down at the, uh?
Next Wednesday.
Fire Hall.
That's the Fire Hall, uh, next Wednesday.
I forgot.
It's a Fire Hall. It's a Fire Hall.
It's a fire station.
Fire Hall.
Fire Department.
Next Wednesday, and then on your calendar.
The design committee has also met again to talk about finishes, and we've got some more colors and all that stuff decided.
When is that meeting?
Uh, we haven't had that meeting.
We don't have it yet?
We've already had that meeting.
Oh, oh, I thought we were having another one.
We, we are gonna have another one, I actually just emailed also today to email you guys on another date.
Oh, you want to talk about it now?
It's the 27th, 28th of this month.
Twenty, you said 27th, 28th, or 29th?
All right, let's look at our calendar right now.
27?
28th, 29th?
I see coffee with Council Joe and Bob.
Not me, that's, that's a night though.
Yeah. 28?
What time are dates for?
You're not, it's for, it's for the design subcommittee, me and Joe.
Oh, I've got into interior decorating.
All right, which day do you want to do it? Hey, which day do you want to do it? I'm wide open, all three days.
And as I am as well, except for...
Let's do the 28th.
Okay.
At, how long is it gonna take? An hour?
One or two.
In 11.
Why? You're taking me to lunch?
I'll take you to lunch. And I have the, um, furniture package already put together, so y'all can see the floor layout of the furniture that we selected. I'll give it to you guys if you can look at it beforehand. I didn't want to give it to you now, because I know you've been looking at it during the meeting.
She is so good.
Instead of undisclosed location.
Instead of your office, I'll just find it.
No distractions during the meeting. She wants to go home before midnight.
I do have something to add.
Nope. Okay, it is, it is Bob.
Now, a citizen has a 150-year-old shovel that, um, has a year and mark. And, uh, you know, I mean, it's, it's an antique.
I'm gonna call him on that, I'm gonna wear the funeral flag.
Used to, uh, is generational, is actually going to its landowner, but, uh, here aren't, but, uh, that shovel may be, uh, I'm gonna introduce, could be used to pitch the first dirt.
I know where you're going with that.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna have a ground, ground breaking ceremony?
Gotta get helmets.
We are.
And a ribbon.
Can I get a pink one with my name on it?
Groundbreaking ceremony and actually hang it up in the, um...
I want a pink helmet with my name on it. I think that's a great idea, Bob, but I really want a pink helmet with my name on it.
You want, you want what?
A pink helmet with my name on it.
I think the contractor supply, should supply the, uh, the helmets, just saying. Oh, he'll have to add that in the RFP.
Oh, I'm sorry, I still have that, you have some screen sharing.
There's Bob.
They're like, ooh.
Let's not break his shovel.
Yeah, please don't break it.
I'd wear that. I already have one. I have two, actually, so I can...
I love it.
Right? Of course you are. It's only $10!
So, um, so we're gonna, you're gonna add to the meeting the 28th Wednesday at 11:00.
Yeah, I got it in my notes, I'll, I'll prepare that.
Yeah, we have to have a groundbreaking ceremony. They cannot just like, yeah, we gotta do that.
And I'll make sure to say pictures, pictures.
Well, like I said, I have a, I'm a citizen that has like a generational in Marvin community, or like, like a whole 150-year-old shovel.
Yeah.
And if this thing is nice and used and then hung up.
I know, I don't want to break it, though.
That display case you guys were talking about for...
That'd be awesome. Okay, that's cool, Bob. Tell them, we, tell them we'll take it.
Okay.
Is, is he a resident of Marvin?
Yeah.
Yes, he is a resident of Marvin.
He's actually 150 years old.
Yeah, he's close, like I can get his name.
All right, I won't tell John Jones you said that.
Stop if you're close.
Ah, that's funny, okay.
All right.
Oh, that's, yes, yes, that's awesome. I'm so excited about that.
When would we do, when will we schedule a groundbreaking?
Well, um, whenever we have a pre-con meeting with the contractor, we can get some dates scheduled, but we won't be able to really schedule it until, well, I guess we could schedule it sometimes before we get permits. We don't happen to have permits.
Right.
We'd want to do it somewhat close, so that it's not...
Like, oh, they broke ground, but they're not doing anything. I need enough time to get my pink helmet.
Commencement is 10 days after permit approval is when the project commencement, contractually, thus when their time starts.
We can go ahead and plan it.
Yes, yes.
So we got a 10-day window.
I gotta, I gotta work on that.
Is this the thing the public's coming through?
They get their order, he's obligated within 10 days.
Okay, I'm gonna get a pink one. Does anybody want a hat? I can get a, I can get a color. Does anybody want a hard hat?
Well, the foremen's usually wear white, I'm just saying.
Well, then you better get me the white one.
I got, I got white, yellow, blue.
Cam, if you're putting us in hats, you can put me in any color.
Orange. We should do blue. You guys can do blue.
Yeah, Bob?
Do you remember that awesome red blazer, remember that picture, okay? If we have enough time, okay, I think I take about a 44 chest.
He's talking, he's, there's a red blazer and an idea that we were looking at for, for, for Don and Nick, and he, he fell in love with that instantly.
Does anybody want me to get him a hard hat?
I want you to bring that old truck.
Only $10, what color were you wearing, Jamie?
I'm sorry?
Well, we're all wearing different colors?
I'm getting pink. You guys can get whatever color you guys want.
I'm not wearing one.
The blue is lovely, the blue is really nice for...
But you're gonna put council, councilwoman?
I'm mayor pro Kim.
I love it.
That's good.
I already have a helmet, I'll just change what's on it to...
I'll, I'll take a white one.
You want a white one? Okay.
I don't want to spend any more of the village.
Jamie, what color?
Blue.
Okay.
Well, obviously, what's left for me is red, that's fine.
You want red?
Red, white, and blue.
Yeah.
Okay. Christina, what color you want?
I'm, I'm gonna take the picture.
You have to be there, you have to wear one, what color you want?
Yeah, God knows you're gonna get dirt on your head. All the high steel beams.
Austin, what color do you want?
Uh, give me Marvin green and put clerk on it.
Okay, hold on, you got that green, or you got...
Kelly green.
Ugh, that green is Kelly green.
That's barf, I'll simply do that one.
That one?
Sure.
Okay. What color would Row Hit want?
Um...
He's not here, barf green.
That's what happens when you don't show up.
You can get, you can, uh, you can get him, uh, he can blue, he likes blue.
Okay. Okay, Bob, are you, do you want a helmet, or are you really gonna wear your motorcycle helmet?
No, I, I said I would take red.
Oh, I gave you red, never mind, sorry. All right, hang on, I've got one green, one red, two blue, one white, and two pink, is that right?
We wonder why the meeting's got to 11 o'clock.
Two, three, four, five.
Yeah, it's got everything to do with it.
While we have a bank here waiting on the...
Joe, at least you're not bored.
Wait, is that right? Can we need a helmet for anybody else? Is anybody else gonna go?
I don't know, but while you're looking on there, go ahead and look at the gold shovels.
Okay.
Does Jamie, does, is Jamie?
I think everybody spray paints these shovels.
They spray paint them?
Is that what they do? Okay.
Except the 150.
Yeah, we don't want to spray paint them.
Okay, I got no gold shovel, okay, we'll just get some and spray paint it. Okay.
All right, so...
Hold on, do I need any more hats for anybody?
Would you guys be offended if I wore my own hat that had a different label on it?
No.
I'd be personally insulted.
Come on, is it gonna have Pittsburgh steel? No, no, it's been my wife's former company. It was when I did a project at Habitat for Humanities, this is good rich on it, so, I can take over that. Mayor?
Mayor.
Just put the mayor.
All right, keep going, I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna do this.
All right. Where are we at?
Unfinished business.
Unfinished business item one.
That's where we're at, so we're down with Village Hall?
Yeah, so you're good.
Moving on to the new F is, uh, uh, discuss, unfinished business discussion, consideration of incorporating a candidate questionnaire into the village's website, and consider adoption of candidate questionnaire policy.
Okay, so in your packet is the policy, based on what you guys said, the feedback you gave at the last meeting, um, you guys added the questions into the, into the policy, agreed to adopt it by a majority vote, um, maximum of 150 words per question, changed the, um, submission deadline to two weeks after the filing deadline as, as set by the state, and you added to, uh, to prohibit those using the questionnaire to ask staff questions regarding the content of other candidates' submissions. Uh, any violation of this policy that I flag, you guys have requested that chaplain review, um, and that completed submissions will be on the website in alphabetical order by candidates' last night.
Here's the other thing I would recommend, as long as we're not removing any bad language or thing like that. I think we submit exactly what they send us, meaning if they submit it, you're not spell checking.
I'm no, I'm not doing that.
That's my point, but it doesn't say that here. But if they say, oh, you didn't spell check, so no, you sent me a, um, a word, and I received the word, and we accepted everything, but if, if they're spelling, or whatever they're saying, as long as it doesn't, it doesn't go against any of these, I, I want, I don't want you going in there as a clerk and spending...
That's, that says in there, ask staff to revise or update their submission.
There's something in there.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure on that. Um, you guys are okay with not exclu, including external links?
To need a purchase order?
For their websites, I assume? Nobody?
No, probably don't want any connections to fundraising or anything.
That's fine. Um... Are you guys okay with the questions? We'll start there.
That's, and these questions are based off your discussion from, from the last meeting, just wanted to let you know.
Did you change the one that we talked about?
No, I mean, I, I'm gonna go first here. Instead of question number one being describe your government and community volunteering experience and accomplishments, I don't know if that's a prerequisite to becoming a council member. I would just, and, and we'll get to that, but the first question should be, just tell us about yourself. A lot of what people tell about themselves kind of tells you about what kind of person they are. Just, just a blank statement, tell us about yourself. You know, hey, I'm married, or I, I have two kids, I've been in Marvin, they can say whatever they want.
So briefly describe yourself and your background.
Yeah, tell us about yourself, yeah, something simple, um, because I, again, I don't think you need a prerequisite to have government experience or volunteer. The second question could be geared to that, is describe your experience and accomplishments, um...
Well, you could just ask, do you have any governmental or community volunteering experience and accomplishments? Yes or no, and then underneath that, put briefly describe.
All right, can I come in and put in here?
Sure.
Depending upon how public it is, um, as I used to hiring people for, you can ask their personal lifestyle, or how it applies to council, you know?
This is a public position, Bob. They ask it, they ask it all the time in the news when you answer the questions in the, the local news, um, you know, about that, so it's, because you are a public official, I don't know, this is not, it's not like we're employed. That would be my argument.
Yeah, I, I mean, you could rephrase it like, let us know any background.
Tell us about yourself is very... Whatever you want to share is up to you. You want to share you're 80 years old, that's fine. You want to share that you got 20 kids, that's up to you. We're not specifically...
I was gonna say, if it's, if it's an open-ended question, like, tell us about yourself?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, but not specifically...
And you got 150 words to tell us about yourself, like, hey, I'm...
Words or characters?
Words, characters, they're way too short.
Yeah, so you're 150 words to tell us about yourself, hey, I've been in Marvin 10 years, I'm married, three children, uh, working this...
Okay, so how would you, so how would you rework the first question, then?
Briefly describe yourself and your background.
Perfect, okay, good. Number two, if elected, what would, everybody go with that one?
Well, number two would be describe your experience and accomplishments.
Okay.
Do you want to do governmental, community volunteering, or, or relative?
Just open-ended, leave it open, because they may have experience in other volunteering services that aren't government and...
Like their HOA?
Yeah. Um, then you go on to, if the, if elected, what would be your top priorities for your term in office?
Not, not, just take out if elected, just what would be your top priorities?
What would be?
Yeah.
Your top priorities for...
Yeah, because that matches the others.
And then how do you plan to address it, what's your long-term vision, and how you plan, yeah, that's good.
And that's it.
Oh, and get rid of professional photograph, because like, we're gonna have glamour shots?
I mean, you don't want, I mean, the idea is you don't want someone posting a picture of themselves looking very sloppy, but you know.
I don't, if, if that's the picture, if that is the picture that they want to put out there, go right ahead, knock stuff out.
So what are you saying here? Don't do...
Just take out the word professional.
Oh.
Because people are gonna think, oh, they have to have, hire somebody, like, just submit a snapshot.
That would be what I would interpret.
May, but are not required to provide photograph with their submission. Okay, so I'm keeping it real simple. Obviously, it's focusing on what they feel is the most important things in the village, which is what we all as constituents want to know, because we're all voting still, too, and, uh, what their top priorities are and how they're gonna get it done. Any other questions you think for that?
Nope.
Less is more.
Keep it simple, Stephen.
Okay.
Any other, any other revisions?
I know, I'm getting ready to text him right now.
All right, um, any other questions or concerns on this before we move forward, okay?
Okay, so I need, I'd like two motions from you guys. First, a motion to adopt the candidate questionnaire policy as amended.
So I need a motion to adopt the candidate questionnaire policy as amended? Calls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And second, uh, pursuant to the policy, we need a motion to incorporate a candidate questionnaire into the village's website.
Okay, so...
Do you need to move this election, this, this your policy?
So we need a motion to create, have this policy?
Incorporate the candidate questionnaire into the village's website.
Okay. There's a motion on the table?
Yes, I'll make a motion that, uh, that we incorporate that into the candidate questionnaire into the village's website.
Okay, calls in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The motion passes.
I will get this to our website guy, and I will give you all an update whenever it is ready.
It'd be great if we could pass a norm that precludes non-media people from publishing questionnaires.
Once you put this out there, I mean, it's a public forum, including your control over content.
Yeah, well, that's where I think, just for the public, if they're listening in, anything that's questioned on these questionnaires, it's gonna go to the attorney for you, because we're not gonna have staff involved.
If I flag it as potential...
Yeah, flag it against me.
Okay, moving on, um, next up, we have discussion of statement of economic interest and code of ethics form.
Back, back, back again, okay, um...
I felt like I just talked about that this morning. Oh, wait, I did.
Okay, so since the last meeting, one person, one additional person has turned their pens in, uh, so you're down to, um, the only ones who haven't turned them in are Sherry on the PRG and MHD committee, Mike Gilboy on the BOA, and Mark on the planning board. That's it.
Dorota Clegg and TJ Ford.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about them, Dorota and TJ on the MHD committee as well, so. Almost everyone has them, and just have a few stragglers, um...
And they're due at the end of this month, right?
They are due at the end of the month, so initially, you see this one more time, and then we're done with it.
I have reached out to Mike Gilboy to have him do it.
So we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, oh, she says it on her here, Sherry. So that's one.
John Jones has spoken with, uh, Mark. I have not spoken with him yet, but I'm expecting him, be in touch with him soon.
I can send, um, because she's been texting me back and forth, um...
Who?
Dorota.
Okay.
I'll reach out to her. And that's SEI, basically.
Conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest.
Statement of economic interest and code of ethics. And I, every time they get this in their packet, it has instructions, so. And the memos get scarier each meeting.
Okay, uh, I'll be first, I'm just making a note for myself.
You're fine, Joe.
All right, so that said, oh, just a note, just because I got it from CRTPO, I looked at a thing, and you're the alternate candidate, so you still have to, and all you, you do it online. You should have the online, or maybe I can forward it to your, you know what I did to make it easier, is I put it on my own personal email, and it comes to me, and then I can just send that out. You can log on, and it's real quick to refresh it every year.
Can you send it to my personal?
I, I probably could, yeah, so send, it's just coming from another, um, and then you can ask me any questions if you have any of it, but it's coming from the CRTPO. Because you're on the CRTPO list there, you have to fill that out, but you probably did it already once, right?
I did.
So it's, it's coming up again, it's due April 15th.
Thursday.
Two days, two days, yeah. I mean, uh... Just making a note for mine. I'll just have to-
So any, any other thing about this you wanna talk about? We good on this?
No, I just, Mike will be live hopefully somehow this week.
Okay.
We'll just send you a text.
Actually, I emailed them just so I have, I'll just, I'll do that. Maybe do it from here. So next up, a new business, we're moving on to new business. We have, first item is discussion consideration of rewarding bank bid not to exceed 1.8 million for the installment purchase agreement contract for the construction of Marvin Village Hall, located at 10006 Marvin School Road, and authorize manager to execute agreement contingent upon attorney review.
Hey, everyone, I, um, this is Jamie. I've got, cause we're having audio problems, I've got Andy Walsh on one telephone, and Andy Walsh is from Parker Poe, he's writing the deed of trust. And Charles Hablisten on the other telephone, where Andy can ask the loan question that you have, and any clarity regarding the installment purchase agreement. So hopefully everyone can hear. Christina, did you wanna add anything, or do you want me to drive, or?
You can do that.
Okay, I do have one question.
In the initial memo that you had, I've got the number of 1.28.
I know that, I just updated that number.
So the number's now 1.175?
Yes, it's right here.
Okay, that's the update. Thank you.
And then this, the update that's coming around, I've got an updated memo. We had a lot of conversation at the last hour, trying to get our numbers finalized. So you'll see, if you just take this memo, the last paragraph has what you're borrowing, and then it's gonna have your total debt service payment. So it's, what's been updated is the last, that very last paragraph. So I'll just kind of brief you on what happened this past, last few days. There you go. Did Kim get one?
I got one.
And you've got the new one, right, Christina, that you're working with?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we back up, as you know, on March 10th, you all approved a resolution to authorize Christina and me to negotiate a installment purchase contract, and to go forward with the local government commission to ask for permission to borrow. So we're in the process right now of completing our application to the local government commission. We got various tentacles that it has, that we need to attach documents to. Regarding the bank bid, on March 15th, you'll see that First Tryon, who's our financial advisor, Chazoo is Charles, that's his name. Chazoo went forward, and we went to bid for about, I guess it was out there live for about two weeks. And on April 5th, you'll see that we got three interested banks, Truist, which is formerly BBT, Sterling National Bank, and BCI Capital Management. In your packet, there is a bid tabulation summary of those three bids. It looks, it's a table that looks a little bit like this. Bob, can you see that? That's where we are, that's the bid tabulation of the three banks that came in. So what staff is recommending, after consideration, we had a telephone call, staff and our financial advisor, is for you all to consider moving forward with Sterling National Bank's proposal. That's on your bid tabulation, you'll see, it's the 20-year at 2.7. And what you're borrowing, which is your, what you'll read as par amount, that term is what you're actually borrowing, is the 1.175. And you'll have a total debt service payment over the 20 years of 1.5. And so Christina's scribbling it out.
I got it.
With a, with the suggested action, but I, in your packet also, you'll see, there's a comparison of Truist, which is the runner-up for 15 years, but we're really leaning strong on Sterling. So there you go, Bob, there's a comparison of the three runner-ups that we looked at. And then you have the details that follow about what you're borrowing, what the principal and interest payments are, and these documents are all going to the local government commission. Now, you had asked earlier tonight about when the first coupon is due. I wanna correct, correction, the first coupon is due, or the first payment is October 1st of 2021. So you'll see that on a-
That makes sense.
On page three, so correction to that. And then, of course, you've got your amortization schedule, being if you all move forward with Sterling National Bank, and then you have an even more detailed amortization with the 10-1 date, and what you're paying in principal and interest, and your annual debt service payment, which Christina talked about earlier tonight at the 86-542. And, and that's, and then you also have your other bids in there as well, if you're interested in Truist or BCI Capital. But I, that's a lot of language I just threw out at you. So I'll let you absorb it, if you have any questions, over the floor, any questions you may have?
Jamie, what was the, was it Sterling that had something in 15 years?
Yes, Sterling has a 15, yes, Bob, Sterling has a 15-year option as well.
How much was the interest?
The interest on that, if you go to your, you guys go to, so Bob asked about interest in the 15-year. And so your interest rate on the 15-year is 2.5. You see, and it's on this, it's, you see this, it's on this table too, Bob. So you don't have to dig through your documents, see this table right here?
Yeah.
It's 2.5 under the rate for 15 years, Sterling National.
And that is higher than Truist, but Truist has the upfront fee, the loan fee of $5,900, and I just think that's important. That's part of the basis of y'all's recommendation, is y'all did the number crunching.
Thank you.
And you don't have that $5,900 difference, so.
So why are we doing 20 years at 2.75 instead of 15 at 2.55?
Cause we had, the budget was really tight, and we didn't have $60,000 extra to come up with, but now if we're gonna keep the tax rate at six cent, we can definitely look at the 15 years.
And that's what, that's where I thought process is going, by the way.
Well, that makes sense, but-
I mean, it's gonna be a higher chunk of change.
So-
Each year.
So the $5,900 upfront fee, just so I'm reading this correctly, is throwing us out from saving a significant amount in interest.
Yeah, well, the-
And overall debt service.
The trust has the lowest at a 15-year. They have the lowest interest rate.
Correct.
But they, they're charging origination fees, basically. And I can let them talk.
Yeah, but-
And the others are not.
But what Jamie's saying is the, is the 5,900, like, what we would be saving in percentage over 15 years.
Is over $100,000 in interest.
We had already thrown out 15 years altogether, because we didn't have the money to pay for the extra.
Okay.
So that's why we aren't recommending that.
And did, and did Truist not come up with a 20-year?
No, they did not.
And there's actually a reason, not to interrupt you, Jamie.
No, good.
There's a reason for that, I can defer to Chazoo on, if, on the 20-year.
Okay.
They didn't like our amount, it was too small, so, Chazoo? Hey, Chazoo? Did I lose you?
Hey, Jamie, I can hear you, I'm on your chat right now.
So what's, so what's the, Jamie, where are you seeing that $100,000 difference? Cause that's what I'm looking for now.
Go to the Village of Marvin, I don't know whatever this sheet is right here.
No.
So if you look at that sheet, look at your 15-year, you gotta, you're gonna pay 219 in interest on a 15-year, and in a 20-year with Sterling, you're gonna pay 334. Even your debt service, your debt service, I don't have a calculator in front of me, but your debt service is well over $100,000 difference to save five. Now, to save $5,900.
Yeah, but that's obviously-
And that's comparing apples to oranges, because one's a 20-year, and one's a 15, and we didn't have the option with 15.
I, but that's why it's right.
But look at the Sterling 15, so where's the Sterling 15? We do have a Sterling 15. So where's that comparison?
Well, even, even at that one, it's fairly, it's fairly close, because the Sterling, they're at a 2.55, and Truist is a 2.38. Your debt service is, you've got about a, I don't know, I'm just using rough numbers here, 15, $15,000 difference in, in debt service.
Is that all it's gonna be? Because, because what I'm trying to figure out is, between the Truist 15 and Sterling 15, is it $5,900 difference?
It's, it's more.
No, it's more, because there's time value of money.
That's my point.
That 59 is gonna be paid over 20 years, or 15 years.
Right, but that's my point, so why, I know why we didn't look at the 15-year before, but if we're gonna look at the 15-year now, why would we not look at the Truist?
I do wanna, if I may, I, I do wanna add about Truist and Chazoo, correct me if I'm wrong, when we had our deliberations about this, the prepayment in whole at any times. So if you went with Truist, you don't have the opt, you'd have to prepay, let's say for whatever reason your cash flushed, and you wanna pay it off. You only with Truist have, in whole, so like, if you, so if you look at the prepayment, but if you went with Sterling, you could pay in part off on your 7. So that was another thing to, that's another thing to consider. Chaz, did you, can you hear me, Chazoo?
Yes, I can, I can hear you.
Um, did you wanna speak to anything regarding Truist and the 5,900?
Are we really gonna refinance at 2.38?
Yeah, that's probably right, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's my question. You're not gonna, you're not gonna get any lower than that.
No.
I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at numbers, and when I look at a saving, oh, we don't have to come up with $6,000 upfront, but we're gonna save $100,000 overall. And I'm not saying, cause y'all, I'm, I'm-
Well, I'm not taking it personally.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just saying, I know y'all put a lot of time.
The payment difference, 16, is that what you said? $16,000 more per year to go with the 15-year versus, and if we, if we keep the six, the six cent tax, and we have well over that to be able to pay that, so.
And then we're done five years earlier.
With the 15, and probably with the Truist, then, I feel like, at this point.
And I understand the prepay, and I understand the prepayment, as I, because I, I looked at it, and I read it the first, when I got the packet, and I'm like, there's no way we're, there's not a scenario that I can think of that we would go back on, on a prepayment.
No, good.
Cause there's probably calories.
Unless we get money from the federal.
Yeah, but then we're not, but, but still, we're not even, but at that point, that, even if we got, let's just say they gave us $800,000, we would not apply it to that.
No.
Not unless the government specifically came in and said, you have to-
Right.
And then, and even then, it's not, there's not that big a penalty to go away from.
So do you think we can find the extra 16 a year?
Yeah, it's really 20, but yeah, we can find it.
Pull it out of Palco funds?
Absolutely. I don't know who this Palco guy is.
But I don't like him. He's got a lot of money.
No, I agree, $100,000 in five years paying off shorter. I mean, I knew when we did the loan for Eford Park, it was a very short loan.
10 years.
It was less than 10 years, I thought.
Well, I think it was originally 10, we paid it off early.
We did, but not much early, a little bit early.
Little bit.
I mean, I'm, I mean, listen, I'm not great with math, but that, this seems to make more sense.
I tru, I, I truly understand the concerns that you presented us as to why you would go to circle. I do. I just-
Well, we, we directed them to do a 20-year, because we didn't think we had it in the budget. I think you shared that with them.
Yeah.
That's really why we were going down that road.
Now, listen, I say, can we make it work, and you say, yeah, we can do it, but can we do it for 15 years?
It gives us one cash flow, so that allows us to, to be able to do this. Which makes more sense, because we save the, they're paying a little bit more in tax, because of county raising tax assessments, but it's saving the community 100 grand overall, and getting it paid off early, so it's, it's actually, it's a better deal. They're paying just a tiny little bit more, and they're getting-
And if we're keeping this at 6%, that's an additional 70 every year, correct?
Six cents.
60, or whatever it is.
You know, assuming that evaluation doesn't go down.
Right, well, what, it'll, you have it for at least eight years, usually, they go, they do it every eight years.
I think, you know, it does it every four years, I believe.
Yeah, they're trying to do a four-year cycle, is what, what the tax assessment said.
Either way.
Trying to get a cycle like that, to make it more-
And I mean-
If you're confident, Christine, we can find that.
We can come up with it.
Okay.
We'll make it happen.
Uh, mine would be to go with the Truist.
As long as we've got 50,000, we can continue.
Yeah, we're still fine with that.
Oh, no, I just wanna return back to, I don't wanna interrupt the conversation, but Andy, I knew you had, wanted to know some details about how installment purchase agreements work. So Chaz can answer that question if you wanna get into it.
Do, do you guys want to take, before you get into another topic, do y'all wanna have any input from our financial folks about what they would recommend?
I'd like to hear what they have to say, based on what we just discussed, if they're on the same page as we are with this.
Okay, hey, Chaz, did you hear that?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, the group is leaning towards Truist 15 years, and what are your thoughts around that?
So I certainly agree with y'all's observations about the interest cost savings compared between 15-year Truist and the 20-year Sterling. But we certainly would agree with that recommendation, provided, and I know y'all discussed, discussed this, that you have within your budget the ability to cover that additional 15,000 to 20,000 dollars a year of debt service by looking at the 15-year term. In terms of the upfront fee, yes, that $5,900 will be an additional expense that we all have to pay to Truist, but that is something that we can build into our borrowing amount, so not be an out-of-pocket expense. For you all, it'll be loan proceeds that will get paid at closing, so it'll be no additional expense. It'll just be finance over the 15-year term. And then lastly, in terms of prepayment, as y'all noted, the low 2.38% interest rate, very unlikely that you're gonna be able to refinance that down the road, just given that we're at a historical low interest rate environment right now. That being said, Truist does give you the ability to repay it if, for example, you came into, you know, a substantial sum of money that you would like to put towards a loan, but as Jamie noted, it would only be in whole, that would require you to pay off the whole loan. If one tells you, if you couldn't make a partial repayment. But I will just note that Truist does offer two options, we don't have to decide just yet on the prepayment provisions. One is in whole at any time, so from day one through the 15th year, you could pay it off at any time. And that would come at a 1% penalty. So using round numbers, if you had a million dollars outstanding in order to prepay that loan, you'd pay a million dollars plus a 1% penalty, so an additional $10,000. An alternative option is, basically, you cannot repay it for the first half of the loan, so roughly seven and a half years, but then the second half of the loan, you could prepay it in whole, at what's called par, or 100%, meaning you would not owe a penalty. So they do give you two options, again, we can, we don't have to decide that right now, but it just-
Nor, nor do I think we should.
It's all the flexibility in terms of the prepayment.
You're not gonna use that money for that.
Uh-uh. Can, can I confirm the amount with him, so I can make sure we get the motion out?
Sure. Hey, Chaz, I'm gonna put the handover over to Christina, she wants to refine the motion and confirm amounts.
Hey, I just wanna make sure I get the motion language correct, and I just wanna confirm the total debt service number for Truist is gonna be 1.394, Bob, 981?
Uh, we will need to, uh-
I'm gonna have to remember something.
You have to on that minute, that should be correct.
Yeah.
Do you need that for the motion right now, or can that be a follow-up?
I guess we can do a not to exceed.
I think we do, let's do a not to exceed and do it higher, cause if they're gonna amortize that $5,900, they're gonna have to do a new schedule.
Yeah.
That, that's correct, it's gonna be slightly, it'll probably be right around 1.4 million, give or take, but once we build in that, that $5,900 fee, that'll raise our par amount slightly, which will increase the ultimate, the, the total feedback.
Okay, so I'll just say not to exceed one point four, you think?
Um, one, just to be safe, honestly, one point four one, uh, just to get a little lower in there.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, are we still? Do you still wanna discuss? Do you wanna learn more, Andy, or do you wanna do a motion or?
So, well, the only question I really have and I and.
Here's Mr. Ford.
I uh I understand generally with with you build a house, um, you do a construction loan and then it's converted, pump your CO into a an installment loan. Uh, and I was curious how this was to actually work with this, how how um the money was dispersed and, you know, as we go through this process because obviously this general contractor is gonna need to take draws as the construction goes along to pay his subcontractors and such. So how's how does this particular loan type work?
I guess um happy to answer that. And I'll I'll also um ask Andy Walsh at Parker Pope, you all five accountants of China divide. Miss Pete, uh, but what will occur is that at closing, if we go with the Truist option, the loan proceeds will be placed into an account at Truist. And as invoices come in for construction, you all will submit the invoices and requisition funds from the Truist bank account to cover those invoices. So during the construction process, the the lender of Truist in this instance would have a lien on the loan proceeds that are sitting in the bank account. And then once the construction is completed, similar to uh the process you had mentioned with the home construction, uh, the deed will then be placed on Village Home. And that will be securing the loan for the full fifteen year term of the financing. And then once the loan is paid off, whether it's at the fifteen year maturity or you have to repay ahead of that, the uh the lien will be released. So no longer incomer to it. It will be uh the village's property.
So we will start paying on the loan before the construction is completed?
Yes, that is correct. So the way we have structured this, uh, this loan, the first payment will be made on October first of this year. It would be an interest payment and then principal would begin amortizing in April of twenty twenty two. So there will be a few payments made on the loan prior to construction completion. I'm assuming it's probably a twelve to eighteen month construction uh term. So there will be a few payments made um that will occur ahead of construction completion.
Okay, cause that's that's unlike how you would do a house because you would do a twelve month construction loan. And then upon completion of of the uh the building, then you would take use the building as your collateral and then go to an installment loan. So it's a little different, but it's it kind of follows a similar line by putting the money into an account that is used specifically for the construction. So I understand. I appreciate your explaining that.
Yes, absolutely.
And when is the first payment due?
October one. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we ready?
But I thought we were doing the lump payment.
Thank you, Chaz.
Uh, but stay with me, you two.
So.
The first year is a little different. He said you'll do some.
I'll figure it out. Either way, it's gonna be the same bottom line. I'll figure it out.
Will the bank will Truist accept the lump payment or will they have some lump? Okay.
Are you ready? All right, I'd like to make a motion to award the bank bid to Truist Bank in the amount not to exceed one point one four million for financing.
One point four one.
What did I say?
One point four.
I'm sorry. One point, okay. One point four one, sorry, million for financing for Villa Tall. I mean, you should see what I'm looking at right now. For for fifteen year term at two point three eight percent and authorize a manager to execute loan closing documents contingent upon attorney review.
I mean, she's like scratched stuff out. That's just gonna appear.
Further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving forward. Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys. We're moving forward on the new scope.
That's very exciting.
Thanks for hanging in there too, guys.
Yes.
For all our antics.
Sure, the hard hat purchases and all.
Thank you all very much. Have a nice evening.
You too.
Bye, you too.
They're not charging us per hour.
No, they're not. It's on my fee. It's a fine fee. Don't worry. I was like, it's one fee. Don't worry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. True, yeah, I get that.
Don't worry about that.
Top top.
Um, next on the agenda, we have discussion consideration and discussion and consider adoption of general fund budget ordinance to amend various operating expense lines in the general government budget.
Very minor changes. Nothing substantial.
No, we're just trying to get lines that are making it out of there.
Too many plaques.
Yeah.
And then if everyone's leaving. Too many plaques.
I need to see if we can get a punch card or something.
All right, so you just need a motion to approve that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I need to make a motion to approve the general fund budget ordinance to amend various operating expense lines in the general government department budget of the general fund.
Is it not to exceed amount or?
Not to exceed your appropriation, ma'am.
There you go.
As as presented.
As presented. Okay, further discussion?
All of us in favor?
Aye.
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 Get the credit card. Next up, we have discussion consideration of communication topics were made twenty twenty one.
Okay, since we don't have a work session this month.
We need groundbreaking on here. We need the groundbreaking date. And then add the repair items too. Repair items.
Okay, so repair and ground repairs and groundbreaking.
Signs, replacements.
Oh, yeah, pictures of sign replacements.
Oh, I've already I've already advertised it once. We can do it again. Sign replacement.
No, no, like when we start replacing them, take pictures and put them out there.
Repair, sign replacements, groundbreaking, um. What else you got?
Do we wanna pick our groundbreaking date? Because we're not gonna have a work session.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do it now.
Do it now.
But you don't.
Well, we don't we don't necessarily have to wait on permits. I mean, that's just kind of.
Okay.
Well, we wanna try to get it somewhat within like a week of them actually starting. So I would say probably.
Don't most groundbreakings and I'm just I've I've done this, but don't most groundbreakings have like a piece of machinery in the background or something?
No.
Hmm, they can just have the shovel and something.
We're gonna have Bob's truck nineteen fifties with the old shovel.
Hey, you guys want some machinery? I can bring some machinery.
We could we could pull out a sign that says future town hall.
Yeah, we pull a sign that says future.
Did you hear me? We'll pull out the old, this is the future side of town hall, put it up in the background and we'll stand in front of it with our shovels and our hats on and that's what we'll do. That's what they do. They don't have any like.
Okay.
I can bring the box if you want.
Can you?
Yeah.
Can I drive it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just pick a date so that I can.
All right, okay, let's pick a date.
Going back to the budget, what um what kind of insurance policies?
Yeah, Kim's driving and having equipment. We gotta notice things off.
Got a rider.
He was able to start.
He had a rider.
He was able to start when.
The contractor?
Yeah.
We won't know until we get permits, but it'll be ten days after the permits are issued.
Let's do it the first week of May.
Yeah, we'll likely get approval by the end of this month.
Let's do it on secret Mio.
All right.
Secret Mio. Oh, then we get a keg.
Why do you need a keg? You need a margarita. Why can't you do it on May fifth?
One margarita. Who get the who get the margarita man?
Yeah, there you go.
I don't wanna wait till the thing happens next week. The last week in April?
Yeah.
How about April thirtieth? It's a Friday and then we can have.
The groundbreaking?
Would we wanna invite any other officials like David Willis?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, what?
Will it give us enough time? I mean, I wanted to make it where people come out there.
It's it's two and a half weeks from now.
We could potentially last for a month, bud.
I don't care. I don't I don't care. Cause you know what?
Christina can't do it the first week of May and I'm afraid by the we wait till the week of May tenth, we're gonna be like literally like.
May tenth is packed week. That's a town hall.
Oh, yeah. Can we can we put a banner out front advertising the groundbreaking?
Yeah.
In the interim, that that'll get most everybody's attention because everybody drives by it. So that'll get a lot of work.
We need to make sure that we have that picture at the town hall meeting.
Yes, I know.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm saying. So May thirtieth. It's a, I mean, April thirtieth.
April thirtieth.
The picture of the groundbreaking at at the town hall meeting.
I might have to wear my hard hat at the town hall meeting, depending on.
That's how I identify.
I I have to assume that that a large majority of the eight hundred people that signed that petition will be out there that day.
I'm sure they will be. Can we say April thirtieth?
Friday, April thirtieth. Do you wanna do a time?
Do me.
No, I'm. What does it say?
Look at your calendar.
Say it again. What?
Friday, April thirtieth.
Okay.
I'm not yelling at you, Bob. I'm yelling at Jamie because he won't answer me.
Let's do it at like four thirty so that we can do uh margaritas at five.
I I'm.
Staff don't wanna stay here until four thirty.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Two thirty.
Well, since Kenny Chesney canceled his concert.
You're in?
I'm I'm open.
Okay. Let's do it at noon. High noon.
How about May day? I might show up in a miha.
How about May day? May first.
High noon. Is that good?
On the thirtieth?
Yeah.
I'm good.
Yeah.
We can start drinking early then. Will you send us out?
I'll be checking your containers, Kim.
And that's it?
Think that scares me?
No.
It's in noon, correct?
Noon.
We can do it.
Okay. Make sure we send out a notice.
There we will.
Bob, are you good?
Yeah.
Potential or?
Yeah, get the shovel. You oh, you need to get the shovel and the gold gold spray paint.
Got it right here.
Gold spray paint. Bring it over to my house. Jason will spray paint. It's not out of it. He loves to spray paint, so. Can you get a stipend on that?
Can we use Palco funds?
So so how all right, that's how is this how is this groundbreaking gonna work? Are we just gonna show up there and take a picture and be done? Or is it gonna be?
We'll make it celebratory.
Yeah.
We'll we'll put it together.
I mean, cause we gotta talk about it now because we're not gonna we don't.
Or y'all can just tell us to do it and we'll do it.
Do it.
We'll get we'll get food and stuff.
Yes, drinks, champagne.
There you go.
Oh.
We can make it fancy.
Break it across the excavator.
Everybody's allowed to attend us if they have their vaccine passport. Be sure to put that in.
Oh, Jesus.
I have my vaccine passport.
I do too. Um.
Is that going?
And and this is gonna be are we gonna have is there parking down there that we can have?
You can park in that area there.
It's a good question.
Yeah, parking.
I mean, I just I just don't want it to something to go wrong to make it look bad to.
Well, people could so likely park as they are public roads in the neighborhood right behind it and walk around. If it's overflow, I mean, you can put so many people in that area there.
We should all meet here and park and like go over. I'll sit in the back of the pickup truck.
Can we get Marvin Ridge Band to play?
I could see. You know what? It's funny because.
Are we getting power?
They are having a celebration on May first at Eford Park. At the park, they're celebrating um the seniors. It's a senior banquet on the first.
Maybe the band would wanna play something for the.
I can check to see if Mr. James would be uh.
It's the middle of the school day.
Uh, yeah. They'd get a pass. They would love that. I'm sure the band director, the band director would, you know, just say, hey, can you do us a favor and get these kids out of class? It's a huge.
It does have to be the whole. It doesn't have to be the whole band.
No, it doesn't have to be the whole band.
This is favorites.
All we can do is ask, right?
Can you let me know?
They don't. Yeah, I mean, I'll call him tomorrow.
Put that on your list, Joe.
Graduating, it doesn't matter.
Put that on his list, actually.
Thirtieth. We would need them for an hour.
What's Joe doing? What's we're not putting him on the list?
Call in the high school about the band.
They play an opening song. We do you do a speech and and we take a picture and they do a closing song and then uh.
Champagne.
See, the problem is is they the the liability to get the kids over here and that's what happens when you start taking kids out of school and you move them over to whatever event it is, there becomes is it a school sanction?
Just ask.
Thing. I get it, but there's a lot of.
I know, but I mean, it's something cool. If I were the band director, I'm like, yes, sign us up. Let's go.
Just ask. Ask the question.
Yep. All they can say is yes or no.
They can say, well.
And and tell them they get free rides with Kim driving the bus.
And I think for that, I'm gonna need somebody to figure out how to get mayor.
I I don't know what they I don't know their repertoire. I don't know how many how many tunes they know, but.
Absolutely.
They know enough to play in a high school football game.
Yeah. I mean, we may still get Silent Night.
All right. All right. What else? I know. What else?
I'll call him and I'll let you know.
Thank you. Okay. We'll we'll get some. We'll we'll make it nice.
Make it nice. Make it nice, Dorinda.
If not, um, would you expect DJ?
Do it again.
Little DJ on.
That looked really legit, Joe.
It's on video.
Bought it.
Hold on, do it again?
Oh, yeah, that's going on next door.
Yeah, that would go on next door.
Okay, moving on.
Are we done?
Yes.
Oh, boy. Just to clarify, you were done with topics, right? No additional ones?
No, yeah. Anybody else have any communication topics other than that announcement and what we have here? I can't. Trying to think. I know Marsh was excited about their, um, are we putting that in there?
They get they get a spot every month for for something if they have it for me.
Okay, well, I'm just saying they're.
We're working on some website stuff with them too at the moment.
Um, it's reminding me of something that I can't remember. So, all right. Moving on, uh, discussion of Springtown Hall meeting agenda.
Okay, so this is in your packet. Um, one omission that I kind that I just noticed today is solid waste isn't on there. That's something big you're talking about. So probably should add that.
And Marvin Day coming in twenty twenty two, we need to add.
Yeah, uh, we had did I actually had a resident call the week before last asking about solid waste and she wanted to know if it would be at this meeting and I went ahead and told her yes, so.
So Marvin waste, we're gonna add. What else?
Marvin Marvin waste, solid waste and Marvin Day.
You can label it however you want. Um, solid waste.
Do you guys like other topics that are on here? You wanna condense, take something off, add?
Nope, I like it.
I've seen what I have worked out with the website by then. I don't know if anything significant's gonna change. So I don't know how much I'll have for that, but we can talk about it.
Groundbreaking matters.
Groundbreaking.
Can we, um, is this is this a order? The order to that you got?
We can change it around.
Yeah, you can you can switch anything around. Yeah.
Um. I I would like to I would like to see the accomplishments.
Yeah, this was not added in any particular order. I wouldn't throw them together.
I would like to see the, yeah, up top.
How about right after the welcome or?
Yeah. Or introductions. So so we'll do the.
Yeah, introductions.
Introductions and then go right into accomplishments.
And then do priorities. And I would actually probably do like the public hearing and adoption kind of towards the bottom.
Okay, well, we're not doing the adoption at night. We're talking about that's the night at night is the public hearing.
Oh, it says an adoption budget adoption date.
Oh, just telling when it's gonna be adopted, which is the twenty second. So we can move that down. Um. And you guys will see this one. You guys will see. Actually, no, you probably won't. We don't have a meeting until then. So, yeah, so.
We'll have a meeting the day before.
Yeah, not much time to prepare that.
No, but we clearly did.
So will you do like a uh with because we talked about doing some pictures of the.
We'll have a PowerPoint with with pict with pictures like we did last time.
So I'll probably need to come in and just take a look at that and go through what you have.
Yeah, what you guys did last time is you had you guys did a special meeting the week before to kind of rehearse. Is that something you wanna do again?
Okay, we do that again.
Okay, let me look. Let me pull up the calendar.
Rehearsals.
You're gonna have another special meeting in Weddington around that same time. Don't forget.
When's that meeting?
Um, I think it's the seventh day, the twenty fourth, so it'll be a little bit.
Okay, so, yeah, that'll be after.
Can we do it the do you need to be here for that meeting? Uh, this question?
Do you wanna do the do you wanna do the rehearsal Monday, the tenth sometime maybe in the morning?
I feel like that's like ten, eleven, twelve. I got a lot of village like stuff that week.
I am out of town that weekend and traveling. It's just my dad's.
Christina's out of the office the week before.
That's fine. She said she didn't need to be here.
I like these marathon weeks when I see everybody every day. And then we go for three weeks and don't see anybody.
Why don't we do it at eleven o'clock on the sixth because Joe and I will already be here for coffee with council?
Rohit will not be available. He's in a CRTPO meeting.
That's fine. It, we can be updated. The people that, the staff members aren't here.
If he's in a CRTPO meeting, who do I be?
It's his, it's the TCC.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And this way, like.
But he's, he's more heavily involved in this.
Because you guys will have basically all the information put together and then we can just kind of walk through it. And if we need to make changes, then you can.
In theory.
Yeah. Because you'll have a lot done by then. Can you guys do the eleventh? I mean, the sixth at eleven?
Thursday, the sixth at eleven.
Just pick times and I'll plug in because at this point.
Jamie, Joe?
You'll, you'll have coffee with council the hour before.
I know, that's why I said. And so then we'll have our meeting at eleven. And so if there's any stragglers, they got to go.
Rehearsal.
I mean, they can sit here and listen to us, but I'm done talking.
Soul, May sixth.
Kim has spoken.
Eleven?
Disspoken.
Can you do that?
Yeah.
Jamie? Joe?
What's that?
Eleven on the sixth.
Um, I think I'm here anyways, correct?
Yeah, it's ten.
And I, well, just so you know.
Bob, you made six.
I think I'm here anyway.
On the sixth, I got Joe down.
What, what time are we doing it?
But I mean.
Joe and Kim.
What time are we doing it?
What, the special meeting?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Be eleven right after coffee council.
The only reason is I'm supposed to be traveling to Pennsylvania because my dad's ninetieth birthday that day. So, but we're celebrating as a family on the eighth, so.
Well, you can leave, we'll, we'll make it short.
Well, it's gonna have.
It really shouldn't take long.
It shouldn't take long. Can you do it? Can you make it work?
No, I, I will have to, but I, we've talked about leaving like in the afternoon. Like four o'clock anyways, but.
Oh, that's fine.
Just because of my daughter's.
We'll be done then.
Other issues, so, yeah. We'll be done plenty of time, Joe. So what time is it? Eleven?
Eleven. And you and I have coffee with council at ten.
I know, but I was gonna look for someone to maybe replace that for me, but because I didn't realize we were doing that, but what's this? Anyways, rehearsal, right?
Yeah. Got it. Pow.
I'm gonna refer to it as a dress rehearsal on the notice.
Perfect.
Town hall. Okay, and it's eleven AM. Sorry, I just, if I don't do this now, it will never hit that.
And whenever, and I'll put it in your calendars, like, I'll put it in your calendars, calendars either later this week or next week, so.
Okay.
Whenever I have a chance.
That depends on him. What you said.
Okay. Yeah. And if I get concerned, I call.
Yeah. All right, anything else on this agenda?
Nope, I'm good. I like it. Austin, you made our, you made our move around changes.
So where's? Around, moving the accomplishments up and the bu, and the budget down.
Yeah.
We'll determine who's gonna have what to talk about in this, correct?
Looks like they already did on the side.
Well, yeah, but.
This, this agenda will.
A little vague. Village Council, could be anyone.
This agenda notice will go out probably that Tuesday, probably two, well, I could put it out, I could put it out right after the rehearsal. I could put it out that day in case you guys wanna make any more changes, but that would still work. And I can just kind of give a summary in, in the publication about it.
Here it goes.
All right, moving on. Next up, discussion consideration of special warranty deeds to transfer ownership of Marvin Gardens. Park parcel to village of Marvin contingent on attorney review.
Now, Rohit didn't leave me anything for this, so I, he.
So moved.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, they're just, they're dedicating the property to the village. Uh, one thing is they do wanna ensure that the, the property is used for a park and they put a limitation on the time period. So if you don't use it, I think it's within five years it could revert back to them.
If we don't use it or?
Man, if we don't do anything with it.
Yes, they don't have to sit there.
If we clear it up and put a sign in there, then we're good.
Just commence.
Would have to maintain. Once you put a shovel through it.
Yeah, I mean, they, they want it to be a park. Um, and they want you to sell it for any other purpose and they wanna make sure it's used, which is reasonable.
Yeah, they're dedicating it.
Yeah, they're dedicating, they're giving you the property.
Does it allow us to put in a?
That's gonna be a whole big thing.
Does it allow us to put in something like a golf cart?
No, it's just gonna take me, it's gonna take time.
You'll have to comply with their covenants, uh, but you should be able to do that.
Because the other thing is I have tried to get them convinced that neighborhood.
Kim.
That you should, they should have allowed a turning lane in there to get up to that light so they can make a left-hand turn to go south because eventually when that, those roads come in. I, I foresee, yeah, there's, there's gonna be no way for them to make a.
You'll just need to make your park with a wide walkway and allow golf carts.
Okay, because golf carts are allowed in Marvin and if people wanted to have a golf cart in that community to go to Publix, to go shopping, they do it all the time at the.
I'd almost have to buy one specifically for that. Considering the traffic situation that's gonna. Well, you all over there.
Right, it's, it's already gonna be a mess, but then also people are gonna be going south to go to work a lot too and making.
All right, this is not what we're talking about. I have different faces on the table.
It is what we're talking about. I just was asking a question specific to the parcel, what we can do with it. And.
So the motion's on the table.
Further discussion. All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, discussion, next up, discussion consideration resolution opposing Senate Bill three forty-nine, House Bill four oh-one to increase housing opportunities.
You guys should all have this in front of you.
So I passed around the actual House bill and Senate bill so you can see it.
I've already read it. I've done my pitchfork and my torch ready.
It's a very long document, um, thirteen pages. I sent it around. I don't expect you to read it, but.
Did you guys all get this?
Got it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, yep. Take one, pass it around.
It never had a chance.
I, I learned the main parts that you need to be concerned with and basically in a nutshell, it just, it basically says that anywhere that we allow single fam, family dwellings, we would have to allow middle housing, which is a.
Who's behind this? Who's this D Hall? Who is he?
I, I have no idea, but from my understanding. From my understanding, it stemmed from Mecklenburg County. Um, but this is the House bill and the resolution of opposition is in your agenda packet. And that's.
I mean, this is a bunch of bull, like, and we need to, we need to be a lot more vocal on next door values.
This would be the only state in the country with this legislation that could work.
This is crazy.
And that's why we have the strongly worded, intellectually worded resolution.
I know, but we need, we need to put this on next door some more because people are like.
It's all over next door.
I know, but people are like, oh, my gosh, thank you so much for putting this out there. Like, the village put it out there too.
Yeah, it's on the communication list now.
So.
Putting it out there.
Just, you know, with what we just got bombarded with, with the county and the water issues. Now, I didn't see in the resolution where, I know it talks about infrastructure, capacity, roadway, but it doesn't talk about water, which is.
That's infrastructure, right?
Is it? Well, infrastructure's everything now, but it talks.
That is true.
You talk to the federal, people on the federal level, it's, uh, it's babysitting for your elderly too, so that's infrastructure. Um, but it doesn't have anything doing water in here. And I, I just wanted to point that out because Union County, if you remember, was making a big deal about what are the water, water sources gonna be. And if you're gonna allow this, where are you really getting the? I mean, this is not just for Marvin. This is for all the municipalities within Union County. I can't see how this.
Yeah, so add it here, including parking and toys.
It's not just the county, it's the entire state.
Well, yeah.
Yes, it's, it's basically taking away local zoning and making a one-size-fits-all, state mandated zoning. I, I just wanna know who this representative D Hall is, where he's from.
Well, I mean, there's, hold on, there's one email. Well, hold on.
I mean, all bills have to be read. They all get through the first pass, but this is like ridiculous.
No, but there's like, there's bylaws and support forms.
Yeah, and that, that's the thing is like all these wealthy, wealthy, wealthy people in this area need to see this because that's not really. Jerk some strings that you got your five million dollar mansion and you got a quadruplex that can go in next door to you because the zoning allows for it and we have no control.
Crazy.
These people need to know this. They're the ones that are gonna be really highly affected by it. You won't watch property values drop.
We need to send out an email, not just a next door.
There'll be, there'll be an email. We can post, we can post the proposed legislation to the website with the resolution.
So I know, um, I think I just got an email from the, um, representative from Wuma for Wesley Chapel and they already have a, a resolution out, I believe. She's.
I think they just drafted it.
Yeah, she, she's, they're doing a resolution and then Wuma's doing a resolution as well, right?
She's suggesting.
We to do a resolution. Because she's the vice chair anyway. Yeah.
I can't find it.
Yeah, I thought she said that they did do a resolution.
And she voted it in there and is recommending Wuma to do it.
Yeah.
So once you guys amend it like this and get it adopted, we can get it out.
What did you amend?
She'll, she'll say it.
Here we go.
So I need to change it. My mind.
Basically adding the word water and sewer, uh, water and sewer capacity between school capacity and roadway.
Okay, Mark Brody, which is Almaron Stallings, is one of, is one of the people that sponsored this. Um, you said Almaron?
Mm-hmm.
Mark Brody, Almaron Stallings is what this says.
Must be.
That can't be right.
Stallings.
They're totally like thirty miles apart. Pretty good drive.
It's two different counties.
Yeah.
Jim, as you're scrolling through there, this started about five weeks ago. Well, and they have a public impediment because of Mecklenburg County, uh, specifically City Council, uh, of. This situation of density housing and.
Hold on, hold, hold your, hold that. Union County sponsor of the bill is Mark Brody, so it's gotta be Stallings, not Almaron.
Yeah, because it's two different counties, literally.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I was gonna say that this, um, became newsworthy, uh, about, about four weeks ago.
It came down some of those.
Um, where there was looking for a push for density housing, which was a public hearing that was quite attended, uh, by, you know, Charlotte City, uh, citizens. This thing expanded to a statewide level and that's where I kind of, um, when I saw the postings on Firethorn, I thought they were, you know, next door, Firethorn, they, they were referring to Charlotte. Uh, I didn't realize that this had become statewide, uh, bill and, uh, you know, it's interesting, there's a lot of transformations going on, but, uh. But anyway, I, I didn't know that.
Now, I, I don't know, but now this person says that Representative Mark Brody is a representative of Stanley County in Almaron, so we got two conflicting. I'm not sure. But this is crazy.
Do you, do you know who the representative for Stanley County is?
What, what's his name? Mark Brody. One person's saying it's Union County, which.
I don't.
And then one person's saying it's Almaron. I, I've never heard of it.
Stanley County.
Stanley County.
Uh, neither, so.
It's a good one.
I can't remember the guy's name.
Another thing we can ask where they're at on that.
Hell, yes, you do.
When we're talking to the workers, I have to stay low. Get your shear sucker shoot, by the way, when you go.
Did you get that amendment?
I have already, I've already made the, made the changes and everything and I've already printed it out.
That's the first time I was there, I was like, what, everyone? I was like, oh, my God, I'm totally not dressed for this.
I don't know. Anyway.
I'll be wearing a shear sucker.
All right, so I'm gonna, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve this with the amendment after school capacity to add water and sewer capacity. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the resolution opposing SB three four nine, HB four oh nine to increase housing opportunities as amended.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye. And then who do we send this to? We can send it to our legislators and we can also send it to any of the surrounding municipalities. And can we send it to the news?
It can be in our email blast too.
It definitely needs to be in the email blast. We send it to the news.
Has the news covered this?
I haven't seen anything on the news about it.
This seems like something huge and the news is, it ought to be all over.
We can send it to the News, Cog, the League.
Yeah.
Send it to all, all the state houses.
I guess, but still, this is, this is definitely news worthy. This is a, this is a huge change. It's the only state in the Union.
Stuff that's newsworthy, the news doesn't wanna be a part of it.
Yeah.
We can send it. Doesn't mean they're gonna have to do it.
Just because you tell the news something, don't think it's gonna get reported that way either.
I mean, if you call a complaint about schools, they get something.
Wait, wait a second. Here's your first, you don't even get to the thing title, increase housing opportunities. Well, who would not vote for that?
Yeah, that's a great title.
I mean, who would, who doesn't want a house?
Right.
Because if you vote against it, you're, you're voting against somebody that all they wanna do is live the American dream and have a house.
You're not woke if you don't, if you're not for increasing housing opportunities.
Yeah.
Well, we gotta.
That'll be spun a whole different way depending on who gets it.
Yeah.
Who, who runs with it.
Yeah, that's true.
So, unfortunately.
I don't need AOC at our doorstep here, so. Saying that we're, we're not providing housing or we're missing housing and stuff, so. Um, all right, uh, moving on. Um, I see that we have, uh, review and consider adoption of council minutes from three twenty-three twenty-one, joint with PRG Board, three twenty-four twenty-one, Village Hall Design Finishes Committee Subcommittee, and three twenty-five twenty-one work session meetings.
So I went ahead and brought these to you guys because you don't have a work session. So if you want, you can review and approve these now. We can go ahead and get these posted online. Uh, did you guys have any, any changes to these minutes?
Um, I was okay on the first one.
Which is the first one?
The PRG.
Okay.
Where do you see the team?
Did we lose our mayor?
Mayor Prokess.
Still on the notice.
Hey, Mayor Brokess.
Mayor Prokess.
I have no changes.
On the first one, okay.
I'm good.
The second one, um, with the finishing committee, I don't think who was present. We didn't add, um, Barbara in there. I don't know if we were supposed to.
You, we don't because she's not staff.
Okay.
But we add, we said that she was down here.
And that she provided her service at no cost to the village.
Well. That's technically correct, but it's not necessarily at no cost, so I'm paying for it.
At, at cost to the village.
Okay, well.
That's what you, that's what you asked me to put in in the last one.
Did I?
Mm-hmm.
No, I specifically remember that as a matter of fact. No, 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 I know she didn't want, I, I, I just don't want it to appear that she's doing, because it's, it's pro bono work here.
This is exactly what it said in the last seven minutes that we did, didn't it?
Okay, I must have missed it.
Yeah.
That's okay. We'll leave it.
Never mind.
And then, then you have the three twenty-five work session.
Any questions on? Changes on that? Bob?
I'm good with all.
Like to make a motion to approve minute, I don't know, to, oh, you want us to adopt them too?
Yes.
Okay, oh, yeah. Okay, oh, yeah. It's to make a motion to approve the council minutes from three twenty-three, twenty-one, joint with PRG Board, three twenty-four, twenty-one, Village Hall Design Finishes Subcommittee, and three twenty-five, twenty-one, work session meeting, as presented.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Austin, pause it.
I didn't look at you, I was looking this way.
Oh.
Looking at you on the side, the side, fish eye, I got apparently a fish eye that works there.
It's getting light wrong, it's a little bit.
Yeah, I know, it's coming, here it comes. Open topics, um, I just want, I have one, real quick one, that goes back to what we talked about, um, there was some, what?
Well, yeah.
So what?
Nothing.
There was some confusion about the parcel in, uh, Eather Park.
Yes.
Okay, I think I clarified that after, after reaching out to things, but just for the record, for the community, even though I clarified with you, what had happened was, when there was annexation going on, they had to do trades, there was a formula used, and they took that out to meet the formula for the state, so they could annex. The problem is, they never went back, after everything settled, dust settled, went back and annexed that park, so there's no problem in annexing. And I started with Terry, um, Patton, and just talked to her, and I think we kinda figured it out, and I basically said, I'm gonna present, give it to you, which you did, you understood the formula better than I did, but I do wanna thank Anthony Berman, because apparently Terry reached out to him just to confirm, Anthony called me back and confirmed all of that, that, so he's a good resource, he was a former councilman.
And I have his contact information.
Okay, good, good, because he definitely can help with a lot of, uh, information, clarifying things, and what actually happened and stuff.
It, it's my understanding that the way satellite annexations work is they can't exceed a percentage of your total land area that's contiguous, at that, at that time, it wa- it, it would've with that, with that parcel. We're fine now, 'cause we've grown a lot since then.
Yep, and we now can freely bring that back into Marvin, uh, so that's all I have for open topics. Anything else? Okay, next up, rev- act- agenda items, review of action items and ongoing action item list.
Okay. I, I'll see what I have, and then Christina can jump in, um, so Rohit will look into the STIP grant bare minimum requirements. Um, I will schedule a meeting of the Village Hall Design Finishes Subcommittee on April twenty-eighth at eleven AM. I will schedule a special meeting of the village council, uh, for May sixth at eleven AM to rehearse for the town hall meeting, um, let me see, I don't know, okay, uh, I, I will and already have emailed Mike Gilboy his, uh, required forms, Christina, I'm guessing Chris is Christina and Derek, I'm not sure, they'll, they'll work out, uh, to get a banner for the groundbreaking, uh, Joe will call the high school about getting a band, and we will send resolution, we'll send that resolution to the news cog, league, state representatives, and what, what do you have to add, Christina, I know you've got more than I do.
Groundbreaking, groundbreaking material, I'm waking, STIP grant requirements.
Got it.
Roundabout lighting update, special meeting on five, six.
Who is going to put the groundbreaking sign, clean it up and put the groundbreaking sign out?
Uh, we will get our own.
Bob said he'll do it.
I, I can help, I can help, I actually have a, a pole digger.
Of course you do.
I do, I can, I can actually do it myself, you know, but I'd need extra handholding.
Well, let's figure something out.
I mean, let me know when you're gonna do it, I'll help you.
I'll pressure wash it.
All right, well, where's they doing, I'll help you.
Is it, she's gotta be here somewhere, or is it in?
It's out back.
It's out back.
I throw it in the back of my truck, uh, pressure water, and I go-
You gonna get them post pole diggers out?
Are you gonna get your pretty new truck out?
I promise, I'll, I'll get the historic shovel.
Oh, good.
And we can hang it in the entryway of town hall, it's gonna be a wonderful thing, so.
I will swing by tomorrow.
So you're gonna dig the holes for the sign with the hundred and fifty-year-old shovel?
I don't think it'll survive.
You gonna do it this week?
Was that?
I can, I mean, I have a-
The sign doesn't need to go up until like, and we need to figure out where you wanna put it on the property, like, you know, the sign doesn't need to go up like right now.
Figure out, yeah, you gotta figure out the staging point, because if you're gonna have a bunch of people over there, we're gonna stand in front of it, we gotta have a good spot, I gotta see.
Well, there's an area where you can park, I know I've met a lot of people over there, there's kind of a place to park. I would say kind of facing that roundabout, on an angle, sort of, did you get that?
We can volunteer, you gotta pay a pressure washing and digging holes aside.
You left.
We're a little careful. No better town hall.
We're planning, I gotta hold it next time.
It's a perilous thing to leave this room.
No more water on the way here.
All of her furniture.
It's so good, now it's all picked out, now it's fixing good.
See, you weren't supposed to get that till after the meeting.
Yeah.
They believe, no, they weren't picking it out.
They do exactly what you said, they're going through it in the middle of the meeting.
Cam.
Put it away.
Cam. Make sure those office chairs are comfy.
All right, um, what else we got going?
That's, we're good on action items.
Okay, on to action items.
So you're going to, uh, council comments.
Oh, so we're done with action items, are we gonna do the list, or no?
I don't have any changes or questions, unless somebody else wants to go first, but I'm good.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah.
'Cause I know, Kim, you usually like to read the whole thing.
I did, I read it, and I have one question, and the person that can answer my question is in here, so.
I'm so happy, I don't have to listen to it all, okay, 'cause it's right here. All right, um, council, council comments, you know what?
I don't have any, Bob, do you have any comments? Nope, Jamie could, Jamie could.
I'm gonna reach out, I'm gonna let, uh, attorney, do you have any comments? Bob, you have, you have any comments? Okay.
I was just teasing, if you do, you can say something, Bob.
And I know you that, right?
I write them.
I was gonna say thanks to staff, for the great job they always do, and they're on top of everything, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
That counts.
That counts.
That counts, Jamie?
Um, I, a couple times ran into Tommy and Mason doing the speed.
They pull you over?
No.
Again, he couldn't catch me, so he tried to slow the show.
They are bringing in other, they are bringing in other resources to help out and do that, and, and that's much appreciated, and for them coordinating, doing that, uh, and hopefully it works. Hopefully, hopefully the message gets out, where people will slow down a little bit.
I hope so.
To hear, so, and-
I need them out at about five thirty on Marvin Road in the morning, 'cause people come around this corner and they're like, woo!
They slingshot.
Come out with the dogs.
But, they, they do a job that, again, I've, I've said it a hundred times, they do a job that I could not, would not do. So, my, I, we appreciate them, and I just, I just want them to be safe, and thanks for staff for all you do. And a lot of the stuff behind the scenes that don't, that don't get recognized, that doesn't get recognized, thank, thank you, all of you, Austin, Rohit.
Appreciate it.
So.
Yeah, Christina answers my texts, like, two o'clock on Saturday afternoon, and whatever, so, it's, I, I do appreciate staff, they go above and beyond, and, uh, so, um, I wanna thank you everybody for that, and, um, and I just, I wanna say that I have noticed that our deputies are stepping up their game, and, uh, I'm pleased with the report that came in this, this month, they're, they're making more traffic stops, they're getting more people stopped, which hopefully will slow them down. Like, that's our biggest problem around here, as far as safety goes, uh, and, so, I'm, I'm very grateful to them for all of what they're doing, and that's about all I have.
Thank you, um, first off, yep, I'll reiterate, thanks staff, and I think we're gonna get to a point where we're gonna be thanking you a lot more, because it's just gonna get busier. All fairness.
How?
It is what it is, um, and, um, you know, with that, um, how busy it is, you know, listen, because you guys were one step closer to, um, breaking ground and getting forward, it's, it's a big deal. I mean, since I've been here since two thousand thirteen, walking in this building, I've, I've wanted to see this happen, and I'm very excited to, to see us moving forward on that. Um, also, just a reminder, we're back to school five days as of, for the rest of the school year, five days a week, so be careful out there, for all of you that are out there, slow it down, obviously.
Giant accident in front of the middle school, high school yesterday afternoon.
Traffic is slowly increasing, if you haven't noticed, too, so, uh, it's definitely become, and again, uh, today was the day I got my second vaccine shot, so encourage all those that are considering, look into it, and, uh, make your choice on that, and be one step closer to being back to normal. With that, um, I have, uh, I guess I'll need a motion to, we're gonna go on a closed session, are we?
Oh, God, I forgot about closed session.
Move into close, I need a motion to move into closed session.